voting, as you all know. The process of ranked choice top your top five candidate. It is important that everyone knows and are familiar is familiar with new process before they go and cast their ballots.
Thank you Habib. So before we bring on the candidates, we'd like to express our gratitude to our hosts today. Saint Mark's Episcopal Church. This church in many ways is a symbol of the resilience of our community. And it is fitting that in this moment of transition, where some of us, besides those of you watching at home on live streams, we are also gathered in person, many of us for the first time indoors. Um, I don't know if I'm just speaking for myself in a gathering like this. Um, but I think in our resumption, it's important not to go too quickly and resume without remembering. And so today we remember Father Antonio Checo, who died of COVID one year ago. He was the pastor of this church. And we express gratitude to this church for the service that you all provide from the food banks that you host monthly, as well as to creating public forums like this one.
Thank you, Kalida. And with that, now for our main event, the candidate forum. We invited all the candidates and six candidates accepted our invitation. We are excited to offer this candidate forum as partnership between community news outlets. This program is watched on TBN 24 television, Facebook Live, YouTube, and Epicenter NYC. Epicenter NYC is hashtag is epicenterforum. You look it up if you can. I asked our candidates when they're they're going to be here and everybody else, especially candidates, to speak slowly and clearly so that audience can understand them. This candidate forum, today's forum, will feature four portions. So it's divided into four different parts. First, the candidate will have two minutes each to introduce themselves. Second, we'll have questions from attendees. We have pre-selected questions for for candidates. And we can, the candidates can meet them afterwards, once this is all said and done. So that option is open if time allows for them. And now, Kalida.
Without further ado, let's introduce the candidates that will be joining us today. Now, to the folks who are with us live in the audience, you'll probably notice that we'll be toggling between you and the folks, a much larger group watching on the live stream. But for the folks in the audience, there's only one rule you need to be aware of. Actually, there's a few, but we already told you those at the door. You can applaud twice today, okay? Once in a few moments after I introduce all of the candidates, every single last one of them. But until then, I ask that you hold your applause and your feelings to yourself. So please do that. And without further ado, we start with Yi Andy Chen, Democrat for New York City Council, District 25.
Andy Chen.
He will be followed by Suraj Jaswal, the Director of Operations at JLC Environment. Manuel Perez, also Democrat for New York City Council, District 25. Alfonso Quiros, a public relations professional, community organizer. Hardly least Carolyn Tran, a Democrat for New York City Council, District 25. Welcome, Kennedy.
So I just want to thank everyone, all of you, to joining us. Let's get right into it. First, each candidate, each one of you, will get two minutes, two minutes to introduce yourself. And then we'll get get into the second one where they you will have questions from the four attendees and we'll get to get to that a little later. So Kalida. Oh, I say, I I guess we can start from there, right?
You can start, yeah.
So so I I guess we can start with this. Okay.
Actually, you're behind. I'm just helping my moderator. I hope I hope TBN 24 is appreciating my efforts right now.
We are, we are. What I was gonna do without you.
I know.
Exactly, right?
If I bust into Bengali any moment, I'm just warning you.
All right, we'll see about that. Okay, so um, I guess we can start with left to right or right to left in this case. Even though I have, I guess I'm gonna go with the paperwork as it's laid out. Suraj Jaswal, you may begin. Please go ahead. You may have to turn it on. It's on? Okay.
Socrates said, "An unexamined life, no good for living." My name is Suraj Jaswal. I'm a Libertarian Party candidate and I'm here to present credentials, background, and my vision for the city for all of you to examine. I'm a dad. I have two little boys, lovely wife. I'm Director of Operations at a top environment consulting firm. And of mental health, environmental science, finance has been my passion. My education is MBA Finance from CUNY Baruch College and BA Psychology, MS Psychology from India where I grew up. Top three points on my agenda are open city canteens and run it at a no profit, no loss basis where everybody can walk in and get a full platter of meal for $3 or so, cup of tea and coffee for 25 cents. Second, I want to introduce personal finance classes in high school. So the students, when they graduate, they are well equipped dealing with their life. Third is very important occupational licensing. We need to do something better. New York City is the worst city in America when it comes to blue collar workers working legally. And besides that, I I want city to focus on supportive housing and shelters for homeless. At least 40% reservation for low income children in talented and high performance school and cut government waste. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for staying within your two minutes boundary. Andy Chen, you may go ahead, please.
Yeah, thank you for having me today. Good to see you. Good to see everyone after 15 months since this pandemic. My name is Yi Andy Chen. I was born in China, immigrated with my parents and my brother to Amherst, Queens 19 years ago. I'm a product of the New York City public school system. I went to Newtown High School, went to Queensboro Community College. And you know, two and a half years in the college, I dropped out because that time I needed to support my family. And after few years of saving, I started my medical supply store with my childhood friends who serving the people with diabetes, disabilities. But that time I see there's so much need, our a lot of our patient, the lack of understanding of their healthcare and their benefit and their rights. So I utilize my experience and my expertise to educate them, empower them, knowing about their rights. And I used to, three years ago, I joined the New York State Assembly Office as a community outreach director, serving the our constitution with immigrant services. Serving those domestic violence written about their rights. And now I'm also the Queens Executive Director for a nonprofit organization called Asian American Empowerment. We have little over 11,000 members in whole New York City. So that's what we're serving. At the height of the pandemic, you know, I recruit over hundreds of volunteer really delivering PPEs, booths, and medication all over whole New York City hospitals, hospitals in and out, all those are medical facility. So that's that's the time I really realize, you know, how unprepared our city is. We need a firm leadership and clear vision really to move our community and city forward. That's why I'm running for city council to representing my own district, District 25 as city hall. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Andy Chen. We'll go to Krishnan. Candidate Krishnan, please. Your turn.
My name is Shaker Krishnan, and I've been uh my neighbors in this council. I'm running because I know how important it is for everyone to have a home. I know that as a civil rights lawyer, fighting against housing discrimination, I'm community activist and a public school parent. Our communities were the epicenter. Our rents are skyrocketing.
Just hold it a little bit closer.
Our immigrant workers
Yeah, let's
Switch.
Let's switch. Let's give him Andy.
Thank you, thank you.
That's a neighborly thing to do. Thank you, Andy.
Andy, our rents are skyrocketing, our immigrant workers excluded, and our Elmer's Hospital utterly overwhelmed. We face a crisis of racial justice, affordability, and public health. And these are struggles that any immigrant or child immigrants knows well. When my parents came here from India, they bounced from apartment to apartment, facing so much discrimination and racism in the workplace. They would take the 7th train here to 74th Street to buy their groceries and furniture because Jackson Heights was the only place that reminded them of a home 10,000 miles away. Seeing their struggles and the struggles of so many of my clients who cross the border with far less, with no status, with no papers. This is what made me decide to become a civil rights lawyer, fighting for housing justice. And we know these fights well here in our community, whether it's fighting against rezonings like Target, marching for our public schools, or fighting against LGBTQIA+ hate. These are fights that we fought together. And now we face a choice as a city. We can be a city that makes incremental changes, or we can be a city where housing is a human right, where healthcare doesn't depend on your zip code. This is why I'm running, because I believe a better future is possible, and together we can achieve it. Briefly in Espanol, tenemos que reconstruir nuestra ciudad para que les beneficie a todos, a nuestros inmigrantes, a nuestras familias, a nuestros trabajadores. This is why I'm running, and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. With that candidate, Miguel Perez, please. Your turn.
Hi, everyone. I'm Manny Manuel Perez. Most of you know me already. I'm a community leader and a Democratic district leader. I represent you already. And I've been doing it for two decades, working with the community to teach people about their civil rights, about the importance of becoming a citizen. And yes, why do I do this? Because I believe in three values: freedom, justice, and the pursuit of happiness. Which is why my family brought me here when I was three and a half years old. I studied in the public system. Yes, I went to college here. I became a public administrator. Then I did go back to my native country in South America to help promote democracy, to do the same thing I'm doing right now. Helping people understand that they have a voice, that we are one, that if anybody in our community is suffering, it affects all of us. This church, it's wonderful. It shares those values. Any of you who know this religious community knows that they allow everyone to express themselves, to be themselves. I have the experience. I have the preparation, have the knowledge. I can help our city, yes, our community, break through all of these problems together. Because I'm not gonna do it alone. I do it with you, my people, me hinting. Siempre junto, always together. So please do vote Perez for council. Perez Consejal. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel Perez. You may. And thank you. And then we have a candidate, Alfonso Quiros. I said it right, I guess.
You did, you did. Thank you very much. Thank you.
It's your turn.
Thank you again for hosting this forum. My name is Alfonso Quiros and I'm a reason why I'm running for city council is I love this community. I came here 20 years ago daily. This community welcomed me. I will never forget. 20 years ago, I was working for Vice President Al Gore. Lord, that campaign was over, I had no idea what to do. So I threw all my clothes in plastic bag, backseat of my car, and I but one job possible. Where I was gonna the whole way up here, I was calling everybody I knew to say, hey, do you know somebody that has a place where I could spend one night, a sofa, a floor, something? Lo and behold, 20 years later, here I am, got a great little family, wonderful apartment, I live in a that only happens in New York. I've been president of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, said I'm community board number three. I've been involved in our community, many, many we as a as a city council, next city, a lot of work. Some of the things that I think that we're gonna be number one, need with the focus towards number two, we need access to healthcare. This is the epicenter, or the title of our of our forum. It's bravely that we have as just and number three, after work with if people thrive and survive. I was president of Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, a lot of these small businesses. So that's part of the reason why I want to run and I hope I can
Thank you. Thank you. And we have on the in this round, our last candidate, Carolyn Tran, please.
Good morning, everyone. I am Carolyn Tran. I am the proud daughter of Vietnamese refugees. My parents' first jobs in this country was as a nail salon worker and a cable repair technician. And as refugees to this country in the 70s, these were the only jobs that they could find. Low wages, no healthcare, and no job security. And it was only until my mom landed a union job with the CWA that our family was able to find stability. But this experience of being raised by working class immigrants has really shaped my perspective on life. And so for over the last 10 years, I have worked in this district, making sure that the needs of our communities are being met. I've assisted constituents on issues of housing, helped our small businesses navigate city agencies, and worked alongside parents to make sure that their educational needs were being met for their families. But it was always my passion and intention to focus on the most marginalized community members of our district, particularly those in Elmhurst. Which led me to organize the first and only public Lunar New Year celebration in Elmhurst that had a community resource fair. And in Elmhurst, we have a large, growing Asian American community in Queens, but it is deeply underserved. And that's why as Chief of Staff for the past five years, it was my intention and effort to make sure that we had a staff that was culturally and linguistically diverse, so that our communities always saw us as accessible and as a resource. And as we have been going through this time, I am constantly reminded how the labor of women, particularly working class women of color, is invisibilized and undervalued in this society. And as a single parent raising two young daughters in this community, factors like these lead people like me historically out of the political process. And that is why I am running, to make sure that we center those who have been most impacted as we recover from COVID. That we expand democracy to make sure that everybody in this community leads together. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates, for your opening statements. So the way that this will proceed, we're gonna turn it over to the audience. The candidates will each have one minute to respond. We will hear from every candidate on every question. I'm going to turn it over to our audience. We're gonna, we've selected two of them. I should let the candidates know, we opened this up to the community to ask us questions. The question that we heard about overwhelmingly is what we will begin the forum with. It was the issue of open streets. For our first question, we turn to Casey Traumer, and that will be followed by Carlos Cortez, who represent concerns over open streets.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Casey Traumer. Thanks so much, all of you, for being here and for offering your perspectives. I moved to Queens, to New York, a lifetime ago from Amsterdam, where I lived in a cycling city. And one of the things that I never would have imagined is that New York could even have the possibility of becoming that kind of space. And that arguably is one of the good things that's happened, thanks, in thanks to the pandemic, if we could say that. And that possibility has been made available by the open streets. And knowing that open streets has been a really become a wedge issue for the neighborhood, I personally am in favor of it, but I know that there are concerns about accessibility for accessory rides for elderly residents, about noise pollution and other issues. And I wonder how each of you might speak to those concerns, given that it has become somewhat divisive. And also keeping in mind that if open streets is to expand possibly beyond Junction, I'd love to hear a little bit about what you think about open streets, about the expansion, if that happens, and how you'd manage different constituents with very strong feelings about it.
Thank you, Casey. Before we have the candidates weigh in, we wanted to turn the mic over to Carlos Cortez. He's in the third row here. If you can have him ask his question, right here in the purple mask.
Good morning. Thank you very much for participating in this forum. Here's my question, it's important to back. Very straightforward. I represent the South Beach Cooperative Section 4, as well as other South Beach cooperatives. I represent South Beach Cooperative Section 4, as well as other South Beach Cooperatives 1, 3, and other residents along 34th Avenue. My question to what is your position on making 34th Avenue car-free zone from 69th Street to 114th? And why is that your
Thank you. Candidate Carolyn Tran, we'd like to start with you. You have one minute.
Thank you so much for both of those questions. I am a fan of the open streets. It's been a space for my daughters and I to really have access to open space during this time. And I also know for so many of our community members who are not able to escape to their second homes or upstate, our working class neighbors also use open street as a way to be out in the I do understand that there are lots of concerns around accessibility, and those are issues I think we need to address in terms of accessory ride. Hearing from our seniors and those who have the concerns, but that is work, difficult work that we can navigate through as a community. We have a rare opportunity to increase open space in this district that lacks it so much. I think we need to work together to navigate through that. I will say that I would, that our office experimented with the first open street when we started Thai New Year on Woodside Avenue in Elmhurst years ago. And so I'm happy to see that we have this organic opportunity come up. Would love to also see it expanded into Elmhurst. And then in terms of the car-free question, you know, I'm a driver too, but I also feel like we need to move away from a culture that prioritizes cars and really elevate
Thank you. It's okay. Finish the sentence.
And just elevate alternatives where we have spaces that all of us are safe to enjoy.
Thank you. Alfonso Quiros.
Just a reminder to everybody, it's just one minute. So
Thanks for that reminder.
Thank you very much. Casey and Carlos, thank you very much for the question. Casey, also thank you for hosting the poetry series here at Saint Mark's Church. Really appreciate all that you've done. I am in favor of open street. Right from the beginning, I believe I am the only person on stage that actually lives on 34th Avenue. So 34th Avenue is my street. And I have been in favor of from it for it from the beginning. I was one of the people that volunteered to put up barricades. I still do it every week and really proud to be able to do that. In terms of making it a linear park, I want to be able to see a plan first before we move forward. There are some real concerns that we have. It's accessory ride issue. It's other issues like speeding, you know, making sure that motorcycles are not speeding along here. I have two dogs and, you know, sometimes I get a little concerned about speeding of some of these motorcycles. So we need to do a couple of things to make sure that either speed bump, we need to educate people about what they what they can and can't and but overall, I am for it.
Thank you. Manuel Perez.
Okay, actually, I do live on 34th Avenue after my building opens up into it, and I think open streets has been wonderful. I am legally blind, so, and I'm also a senior. And I know that the open streets has helped us because we've got more space to walk. Is it difficult with accessory ride? It can be, yes. What I do usually is I set the corner of the street with the avenue. There are solutions, and our community has actually made open street on 34th Avenue a success. Other parts of the city have not had community support. But as Alfonso said, and Casey and Carlos, both of you are part of the solution. It's all of us together, working to find solutions and to make our open street a great success.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Candidate Shaker Krishnan, and this mic is the working mic. I just want to make sure you're okay. All right, go for it. You have one minute.
Thank you, Casey and Carlos. Jackson Heights and Elmers deserve the very same access, safe streets, clean air, and open space as any other neighborhood in our city. But we know that Jackson Heights and Elmers have some of the least amount of open space across New York, and we saw what that meant during the pandemic. So many families like mine depended on a car-free 34th Avenue. It was a welcome addition to our community. And I know as a father, when I hold my children's hand, I hold it really tight when I cross the street because I get so nervous of the speeding cars and trucks that are whizzing by that could hit them. That is a terrifying reality for so many in our neighborhood. But there's a better way forward if we're willing to fight for it. And that's why I have a plan and support the vision to make 34th Avenue a permanent open space that is safe and accessible, especially for individuals with disabilities and seniors who depend on accessory ride. I know we can design an open space that works for everyone. And as someone who helped to create Diversity Plaza and expand Traverse Park, I know we can design an open space that brings together everyone in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Suraj Jaswal, you have one minute.
I have two little boys. I'm looking forward to play a little bit soccer with them in open street safely. And to answer your questions, from legislative point of view, city council and mayor has already openly supported open streets. And they recently passed a legislation as well, too. So from that point of, that perspective, by the time any any one of us get into the office, this this issue will be over. Personally, I don't like majority overriding the views of minority. If city council member, if I were city council member, I would like to sit down with all parties, listen to all concern, and take some middle path to find solution. We don't need this bitterness in our streets. So that's why I I would like to have some peace and quiet and address everybody's concern and find some middle grounds.
Thank you. Andy Chen, you have one minute.
I know the open street question is a hot topic right now. Everybody talks about open street. First of all, I like open street. I like parks. And me and my wife and my little daughter, Nala, we enjoy the open street all the time. And we used to have, we have a cleaning volunteer team that we cleaning all the neighborhood around open streets also. But if there's, because I know a lot of people concerned about the access right, right? School buses, that, you know, I think as a future council member, we, our job is really to sit down here from both side. If there's any room that we can do it better, yes, I'm willing to listen. Because I think that's, that's if any change made to the community, of course, there's no perfect plan, but need to benefiting their majority people. And because I, I don't, I don't believe there's a perfect plan or one policy. So I'm willing to sit down and listen to both side. If there are any rooms that we can improve, I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Chen. So we're gonna move on to our third question. This is from a community member, but it was submitted to Epicenter directly. So I'm gonna be reading from that interaction. One small business owner cites crowds and revelry on the night before Eid. She said she loves that our neighborhood is a mecca for celebrations and parades, but wants to know, how can we keep it clean and safe? Candidate Krishnan. Candidate Krishnan will begin with you. You have one minute.
Our neighborhoods of Jackson Heights deserve the very same resources and services like any other neighborhood in our city, when it comes to include sanitation and services like that. We know there's so much systemic inequality in the city, where certain neighbors receive far more in those services than we do. And I know that as someone who helped to create and fight for Diversity Plaza, knowing how much over the last 10 years, we had to put pressure on city government to make sure that we got cleaning services at the plaza, to make sure that we had a partner in government that would support the work that we were all doing as volunteers to maintain a grassroots open space that's now become a cherished open space and town square in our neighborhood. That's why I have a plan to fight and put pressure on city government to make sure we have far more in sanitation services and to increase our budget for it. I have a plan to work with our small businesses, especially our immigrant-owned small businesses throughout our throughout our community.
Thank you.
To provide language-accessible resources as well to help them with these issues, too. That's critical to survive this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Justwell, your answer, please.
Right outside, right outside my building, twice a year, the street is blocked to celebrate Eid, seventy-third street between Roosevelt Avenue and Forty First Avenue. I enjoyed it. I was not aware that there were some complaints. If that's the case, then City Council member or whosoever become must educate the community leader who are organizing these events to better inform their public to maintain discipline and cleanliness.
Thank you. Candidate Andy Chen, you're next. One minute.
I think that that's a huge issue. If you can look through my Facebook that, you know, we have people complaining about all this issue around Diversity Plaza, sixty-ninth street and between thirty-fourth and thirty-fifth avenue right there. And first of all, what we need to do is we need to raise this issue first to Community Board, who in that committee be aware of this issue. Second, we need to make sure sanitation aware of this issue. Because I know current council member, Dennis, have putting a little funding for the organization called ACE. Make sure if there they cover that area, make sure they doing their job. So you know, that way we can really, really in the future, we can determine we giving the right budget to the organization who doing their job. And also, like every Sunday afternoon, three o'clock, we have over fifteen and twenty people will clean along whole Diversity Plaza, sixty-ninth street, every corner on the neighborhood.
Thank you. Candidate Tran, one minute.
As the only candidate who has been actually addressing these issues of Eid for the past couple of years, what it really takes is working alongside community members to prepare for the celebration beforehand, so that the issues of sanitation, traffic, helping our small businesses is ready, so that it's not an aftermath of the celebration. So many of our community comes to Jackson Heights as the source of celebration, and I think we need to just work together to make sure that we are preparing for that. That is the labor that I have done in this office for the last couple of years, not just, you know, showing up when it's convenient, but actually working with community members and agencies to make sure that we're ready with sanitation, with our businesses and with our community members to prepare for.
Thank you. Um, candidate Alfonso Quiros.
very much. It's a great question. I mean, I used to work for the council member board. One of the major things that we've always had to deal with was sanitation. This is not a new issue. This has been an issue that we've been dealing with for a while, trying to really address it. That's why I'm proud to have always worked with Jacksonville Commission. They have worked to address a lot of these issues that we are facing right here, right? For many years. So when I'm a city council member, I promise you that I will not support any cuts or sanitation, and I promise you that our city streets will become safer and cleaner for everyone.
Thank you. And finally, but not least, of course, Manuel Perez.
Thank you very much. I actually know that these kinds of events require community participation. For six years before the pandemic, every year we'd do street cleaning in Woodside, and I was one of the persons that was coordinating with the sanitation department. And as candidate Tran said, that's the job of our city councilperson, coordinate with the community with the different organizations. Because we know the festivity is coming about, and each one of our communities have our own celebrations. Hey, my Hispanic community, every time one of our countries wins a soccer game, we're out on Northern Boulevard all over, and the police is ready. They put barriers and they keep everything positive and under control. So my solution is, I work with the community. I work with you people. That's all I can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so we can move on to the third question. I guess that's in person, and Arjun Sherpa is here. Okay.
Hi, my name is Arjun Sherpa. I live in this, I've been living here like two and a half decades. And my question is, how much do you know? How much do you all know about new immigrant groups such as the Himalayan communities, like Nepalese, Tibetan and Bhutanese? We are very new in the neighborhood. Our population is growing so fast here. How do you see us? How do you perceive us? Some of our concerns are how to help settle newly arrived people, resources for undocumented immigrants. We want to know how you are addressing these issues. Thank you.
And thank you. We'll straight go to Joshua. Could you please respond first?
I come from the foothills of Himalaya in the northern India, which border Tibet, and I have family relations with the people from Nepal. So I have pretty good idea where you're coming from. I grew up in Dharamshala where the Lailama lives, and I myself was undocumented immigrant for sixteen years. So I know firsthand, I was also facing deportation at one time. So for undocumented immigrant and people from Himalayan region, A, what I noticed was we need to learn English. That will open lot of doors for lot of people, lot of people from Southeast Asia doesn't know proper English. B, at federal level, we need to press lawmakers, Democratic, Republicans to reach a compromise. Unfortunately, Democratic Party claims they are the champion of immigrants, but year after year, as an undocumented immigrant, I only saw heartbreak and tears. They failed to reach an agreement. Republican wants to secure the border before they legalize ten, twenty million people here, which is a reasonable demand. You have to give other party something to win, something they can go to their constituent. It shouldn't be zero sum solution. So I'm, it's a failure at federal level of Democratic Party. They always find some excuse not to reach an agreement to legalize ten million people, and I believe securing the border is a legitimate demand, and if we can do that, we should.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you. Andy Chen, you're next.
Thank you, Arjun Sherpa. You know, for a few, last few months, I used to volunteer for Yenadi Sherpa Association at Elmhurst right there, doing their food distribution. And I learned so much about the Yenadi Party community, because I know ninety-nine percent of the, all the Yenadi Party community here as a first generation immigrant. It's very important that we need to diversify our office. And in my campaign team right now, I hire couple of people in my team that speak Yenadi language. So that's very important that how do we diversify our office? So I believe if we can work with everybody, then we can work for everybody. And, and one thing I like to share with everybody is, two weeks ago, May fourth, I work closely with the president of Vietnam, one of the major organization of Yenadi Party community, introduced the bill introducing Yenadi Day, May twenty-ninth, Yenadi Day in whole New York State.
Thank you. Thank you. Carolyn Tran, please.
Thank you. The Himalayan community is very close to my heart, only because I, you know, as a fellow Buddhist, but also as somebody whose immigration experience closely aligns. I have really made an effort to build deep relationships with our Himalayan communities for over the decade. And that is why many of our community leaders encouraged me to run, because they did not want to lose an advocate in the office that we have worked together for so long. I would say that in working closely with the Himalayan communities, issues such as universal healthcare, universal care for our domestic workers, for our nail salon workers, which so many of our Himalayan community members, particularly women dominate. We need to build better protections for workers. We need to include them when we are creating policies. And I would also say that when we started this campaign, I am the only candidate to have my campaign materials translated into Tibetan.
Thank you. Alfonso, you're next, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sherpa. Really appreciate your question and appreciate your, several years ago, there was an enormous, and my husband Jeff Simmons and I immediately, to help them raise money, help them, devastation, that, I will always stand. I will always, it is important, this community, that we all realize the difference that we have, person, is what really what makes our amazing community that it is. And I was very, very proud to stand with your people.
Thank you. Miguel Perez.
Okay, Manuel Perez, but.
Manuel Perez, I'm sorry.
You see, no, you see, this is a problem that I lived when I came from the States. I mean, I was Manuel. And other things where, as was mentioned, English was an issue. I am close to the Nepalese. I participated in different event that they have for today. Language can be an issue, but I listen with my heart, same with that community when I meet people. The important thing is that this city is made up of community, where there are a few of us that arrive first. Yes, we do go through injustice. Being one of three Perez's in New York University citywide was not easy. But this is a city.
Thank you.
Where we can do better. Thank you.
All right, and finally, Krishna, candidate Krishna, please.
Immigrant labor, especially from our newer immigrant communities, our Himalayan immigrant communities, like you mentioned, Arjun, have built our city before, during and after the pandemic. When my parents first came here from India, I saw how much they struggled, not being able to qualify for public benefits because they didn't know how to apply for them, facing so much discrimination in the workplace. That's why I'm running for office, because I want to make sure everyone does not suffer what my parents did. That's why I have a plan to make sure New York City embraces our immigrant communities as the essential workers that they are in our neighborhood. I have a plan to create an unemployment insurance program for our undocumented workers who've been excluded during this pandemic. I have a plan to provide far more legal services and accessible language services for our immigrant communities. And I have a plan for every immigrant New Yorker to have a voice in local elect. I believe we can build a city where every immigrant community has the rights and resources that my parents needed but didn't have. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's time to move on to our next question. This one comes from me. Many of you know Epicenter NYC was born as a newsletter to get through the pandemic. We've grown into much more than that. We're a community journalism movement and most recently helped vaccinate more than 5,000 New Yorkers. I would like you to grade the city's COVID response to this neighborhood, District 25, and what would you do differently if you become a member of the city council? Candidate Alfonso Quiros, we will begin with you.
very much. And again, thank you very much for everything on that. Several years ago, St. John's Hospital, it did, I went out there, because I just could not believe that this city would allow this. But I am city council member, one of the first that I want to be able to urge our officials, state and city to reopen St. John's Hospital. Any of you could go down to Queens Boulevard, right? Still standing there, still vacant, just for people. That was a major failure. We also have to do a lot better. I remember the days, you know, it was a year of walking my dog, and all we would hear, yelling, the hell. Then walking closer to Elmhurst Hospital, all we would see is white, but we need to do a lot more, and we need to start with better act healthcare, which includes opening St. John's Hospital.
Thank you. And before I let you go, the grade you would give the city's COVID response?
I would give it.
Thank you. Candidate Tran, you're next.
Thank you. What we saw during the pandemic was really the inequities that existed before, and so the pandemic only further exposed it. And in this district itself, there were no extra increase of testing, no open vaccination sites. There was really nothing we were left to fend for ourselves. And I would give the city, you know, an F if I could, right? Because we are really, we were the epicenter and no, no extra services were given to us. And then to say, Elmhurst Hospital was the only public hospital for so many of our community members that chose not to go is really a travesty. I heard from so many of our trans Latinx community members who did not want to go to Elmhurst Hospital because they did not feel that it was a safe gender-affirming space for them to seek medical services. And what does that really say about our public health system, right? And so our policies and our platform has been created with the people who have been most impacted. And to bring a health facility that is gender-affirming, that is a safe place for our community members to seek.
Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Perez, you have one minute.
Thank you. I really think that the city blew it. Yes, it's an F at the beginning of the pandemic. Elmhurst Hospital was underfunded, and they did not respond, they did not realize the emergency. If it were not for Governor Cuomo's decisions, this city would have been in a much worse situation. But our community had to take the brunt of it. We were the test tube babies in many, many ways to find out how to face off against people in intensive care units with COVID. As city councilmen, as a person who knows hospital administration, because I did study it, and I did part of work in hospitals, including St. John's, come on, we can do better. And in the city council, I will make sure that we do do better, because our community, our people deserve it, each and every single one of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Justwell, please go ahead.
I'm a single earner. My wife doesn't work. When she was pregnant, I didn't have insurance for her because it's so expensive to get family coverage. So we went to India. My wife delivered our two boys there, and guess how much I paid? Zero in government hospital. And that's what, if a third world country can do that, why can't city of New York expand community health clinics where we all can go get a checkup? We need to cut on government waste to have this facility. And it's shocking that I can get that facility over there, I can walk in everywhere for free, and here, family insurance can cost you $2,000 or more. So that's what I want to do. That's my dream. I also want to lower and create a different path for students to become doctors.
Thank you. And the grade you would give the city?
F.
Thank you. Finally, Andy Chen. Oh, I'm sorry. Shaker Krishnan after Andy Chen. Go for it, Andy.
That's a great question. Just like Alfonso mentioned, not a lot of people know that we used to have two hospital in our district, which is St. John across the street from Macy. Just think about if during this pandemic, we would have had two hospitals, how many lives that we can save? During the pandemic, I was in and out of Emma's Hospital, every hospital seeing bodies throwing out, that bothers me. And it's obviously that our city is so unprepared for this pandemic. So what I will do in the future is make sure all our hospital is fully funded and reopen our St. John's Hospital. And reopen our St. John's Hospital, not just reopen our St. John's Hospital, but we need additional medical facility. Just a month ago, with the epicenter of epicenter, a month ago, we have second vaccine shot in Queen Center Mall. That's totally unacceptable.
Thank you. Oh, the grade you would give? Z, all right.
Z.
A C, okay. Thank you. Um, finally, candidate Shaker Krishnan, please answer the question. You have one minute.
Our communities are essential. What we saw during this pandemic, how the city's response was an F. We were the epicenter of the pandemic and that was no accident. It was the result of decades of disinvestment in our neighborhood. Elmhurst Hospital has less than one bed for every 1,000 patients that come through that door. And I saw firsthand, working with healthcare workers, bringing PPE to Elmhurst during the pandemic, how little this, the city was actually providing. That's why I have a public health platform written with workers at Elmhurst Hospital. My plan is to make sure that we are providing far more funding for our public safety net hospitals like Elmhurst. I have a plan to provide far more language accessible services for our immigrant communities that rely on Elmhurst Hospital. And I have a plan to fight for the New York Health Act because universal healthcare in the state and city will benefit the most vulnerable and the most essential in our neighborhoods right here in Elmhurst and Jackson Heights that were devastated by this pandemic.
Thank you. And just one housekeeping note, um, candidate Alfonso Quiros, I think your mic is not working for the live stream on home. So if you could, uh, at home, so if you could share with Carolyn when we, uh, when we get to you, that would be great. We're, we're doing a lot of mic sharing, which I think really speaks to the camaraderie that's on stage. You can't get this on Zoom, so, um, I'm turning it over to you.
Oh, thank you. Uh, and, and it's time to move on to our fifth question, and that's going to come from, uh, me. Um, as she was talking about, Mito was talking about, uh, her founding story. TBN 24 Television found itself in the midst of this pandemic, which began last year. Uh, people started calling and blocking for help, uh, so much so that we had to open up a hotline 24 hours. And that didn't help, so we opened up two emails and hired more people to help. I myself took 30 cases, fought against New York City Department of Labor, because these people were desperate. They had two choices, go without food or file for unemployment. And Department of Labor found a way, technical reasons, to deny them. Uh, these are the things, uh, we expect the city council members to greatly help and contribute to the people who are living here. And I'm talking about, in this case, as Jackson Heights, Elmhurst is Elmhurst, that isn't living here. It isn't, I'm non-citizen. Um, I reached out to Daniel Drum's office. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm taking his name. And then, uh, did not get much help. Not sure what's the reason. Not sure what's the reason. Um, we are still helping them day and night, but that's not a job for television station. So where do you, if you are elected in this office, pick up the baton? And what you do and how do you help this community? Because in my opinion, system is broken. We, I think, agree more or less. And the information is the key to navigate, successfully navigate the system, which is not there because of multiculturalism here, different languages. So with that, I'm going to start with Andy Chen. You go first.
Um, I have really good experience with that, uh, because since this pandemic, you know, we have millions of people losing their jobs. So what I did during this pandemic for our community member is, because first of all, we need to make sure all those city government resources are available in multiple language. So how are we going to expect our district, with the most diverse district in whole country, to know, to understand those languages? Because we, our immigrant family, we have so much language barriers. So what I did is average, I opened out a hotline too, um, uh, for all the community member to reach out. We help average 35 to 40 people every day speaking different languages. So we help them to apply those, uh, uh, assistance, unemployment, business loans. So that way, we need to, we need, we need to really know about how do we going to diversify our services and in cultural, language-sensitive system.
Thank you, Andy Chen. And I just want to remind people who are watching live, the news at 12:30 will be at 1 o'clock. Jana Bangla Deccan, Barutaro News, Akta Hobe, uh, that's just the info. Ashakri, I'll put it in the university. I will go to Manuel Perez. And what's your response?
Everybody, every single person in this district, this city deserves and has a right to live safely, happily, and yes, with good health. It is totally unacceptable that we gave funds, unemployment funds, to so many people, but we kept our migrants and our most needy outside of the system. I'm glad to know different leaders, they organize Brigada de la Esperanza, Ornada. We have our, this church having a food pantry once a month. The Catholic Saint Mark's Church has a food pantry actually every week. We have a lot of volunteers, a lot of people helping, and that's great. It's our community. But as city councilman, I will make sure that everybody, every single individual, no matter what their language, culture, or religion, has the opportunity to get the services they need. And if the law doesn't allow it, well, that's my job, change the law.
Thank you. Thank you. Quiros.
Thank you very much. You know, the other day I walked outside my apartment and I saw about 100 people in a... Uh, homeless... This week, we, when my name woke up, broke... Because he was doing anything wrong, because he need... Today, there are seniors, sophomores, who are worried about how this, this... I was elected Democratic, I work with city... No, that's exactly what I'm going to do. To work, like level, issue, speed, uh, proper signing, making sure that our community get proper healthcare. That's the role that the city, that's exactly...
Thank you. Thank you. Arlene Tran.
I'm very sorry that that was the experience that you had to go through. But what that really shows and tells me is that in times of crisis, it is not the government that steps up. It is always our community. And that is why, as partners in government, we need to be amplifying and working in partnership with community organizations who are rooted in our communities that our members go to for help. And for me, um, seeing that that is a prevalent, um, issue within city government, um, we need to change the spirit of people who work in, in city agents and in government, right? We can all stand up here and say that, you know, um, this is what we're going to do, but really it's the spirit of what you see yourself and how you change that culture within city government, which that bureaucracy is so prevalent, which is, which I think is so important, right? Because it is our community organizations that at the end of the day will be the ones that work with our communities and uplift us out of issues that...
Thank you. Krishna, please.
Far removed from city hall, how we respond as government to individuals in crisis tells you everything you need to know about government. And as the only candidate in this race who comes out of the housing movement, I know what that meant intimately during the pandemic. I remember working with a family who called in crisis, Spanish-speaking only, two seniors and adult daughter, who were freaked out about eviction. All of them had COVID and they had no access to food whatsoever and no gas or electric services. These are crisis situations where it doesn't matter what the laws and rights say on paper if city government is not actually implementing them in reality. And that's why I have a plan for New York City to work closely and fund grassroots organizations on the ground who are doing the work every day with individuals in crisis. I have a plan for those services to be language accessible. Because again, if these services from government aren't reaching those in crisis in our immigrant communities, they're not worth the paper they're written on. And I have a plan specifically when it comes to housing, to create an anti- tenant anti-harassment task force here in Jackson Heights and Elmhurst.
Thank you.
To make sure that agencies are holding landlords accountable who vacate tenants from their building or harass tenants in housing crisis.
Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Joshua.
As I said in my opening statement, I want to open city contains, run them on a no profit, no loss basis, where everybody can have a good, healthy meal, uh, with respect. B, as a human resource manager, I have seen employees' issues as an undocumented immigrant. I have seen the issues of workers working and not getting their wages or not, I mean, they can't legally get unemployment. I mean, now state has allowed some funds, but as I said, for that issue, we have to push federal, uh, government to reach an agreement to grant 10 million or so immigrants legal status. As a city council member, I'm very active as a manager. I would be very active reaching out to all constituents. I'm, I myself can deal with South Asian people, but I would like to, as they might have already multi-language, multicultural staff and make sure they deliver the services we are supposed to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before we move to the candidates' closing statements, we're going to have a lightning round of questions, but hopefully we'll get in the breadth of other questions we heard from in the community. Um, we're going to keep this super fast and you're just going to move up and down the aisle. So we'll start with Andy Chen and then for the next question, we'll move this way and then that way, and we'll keep going just to keep it going quickly. Um, you have at most 15 seconds for your response, preferably much less than that. Um, I do want TBN users to get to their newscast. I, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to not have me be the face of the...
I want to hear from you at the, at the closing statements.
That's right. That's right. Um, so what would be your first project if elected?
Housing.
Thank you. Next.
City contains.
Create an unemployment insurance program for our undocumented excluded workers.
Establish a system for all of my constituents to be able to immediately communicate and for me to get back to them immediately.
Landmark the Yantza House in Elmhurst.
Legalizing basement apartments.
Legalizing?
Basement apartments.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, next question. Do you live in the district?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, we have to live in the district to contest the election.
Yes, for 19 years.
Thank you. Favorite restaurant or takeout place? Andy Chen, the pressure is on.
Chao Tai, Winnie Avenue and Broadway.
I think you got a few in there. Favorite restaurant or takeout place?
Uh, Raja Foods at 37th Avenue and 73rd Street.
As a South Indian, I'm biased. I have to say Sumudra Restaurant.
Favorite restaurants? Lima Restaurant and Omwok Restaurant, both on Northern Boulevard.
Jackson Diner.
Name the cuisine.
Thank... That's not fair. We'll, we'll get to cuisine text later. I wasn't going to do that question, but we, now you're making me think I should do that.
Uh, my favorite is Taishan.
Excellent. Thank you. I love all the places you mentioned. Um, let's stay with you, candidate Carolyn Tran. How will you rank your ballot for this race? How will you rank your ballot for the mayoral election?
Um, for this race, you know, this, what I started this campaign with was as a coalition. And so we have not, as a campaign, decided how we're ranking yet. Um, we want to first educate our voters about ranked choice voting, which is a new system in place. Um, in terms of our mayor, same thing. That's, that's a decision that our team will be making.
Thank you.
I've not decided on mayoral yet, but, uh, things that are important to me is authenticity and honesty. And besides myself, there's only one other candidate that I would say that is, and that's Carolyn Tran.
Thank you.
Okay, mayoral race, Eric Adams, then McGuire. As for here in the district, I do respect Carolyn Tran's efforts and work. And I also respect the effort that Shaker has been making in the housing area.
Thank you.
For both races, I'm looking for a candidate that will be a champion for housing justice for our public schools and for our immigrant communities. I think everyone on the stage has done great work. I like Carolyn's policies. I like Alfonso's work in this community, Manny's work, especially with our Latino communities, Sooda's work and Andy's work with our immigrant communities. Ultimately, I'd rank as a second candidate, I'm still thinking about it, but someone who's run a positive campaign to lead us forward altogether.
Thank you. Candidate Justwell.
Uh, I am undecided. The whole city government is, uh, on the ballot, so it's a lot of noise there. I don't know what's true, what's not. I will wait for campaign finance booklet to make a list.
Go ahead.
For mayoral candidate would be Ray McGuire. Uh, for this district, actually, I have two people in my mind, but I still undecided which one.
Okay. We'll, we'll follow up with you. Thank you. Uh, the next question I'm going to ask by show of hands, just to keep us moving faster. If your bike was stolen, please raise your hand if you would call the police.
Okay.
Okay. No candidates raised their hands. Uh, were you in favor of Amazon opening a headquarters in Long Island City? Anybody who is in favor, please raise your hands. Okay? Uh, do you support Bill 1867, which would allow lawfully present residents and those with work authorizations to vote in local elections? Okay? Should I, should I have read them out or?
Yes.
We're good. Okay. Um, all right. I have two quick questions and then we'll get to closing statements. Um, just because I promised I would come back to ethnic cuisine, um, but, but not yet. When was the last time you got on an MTA bus from where to where, starting with Carolyn Tran?
The last time I got on a bus? I mean, as a single parent, it's really hard for me to remember what I did the day before, so... The last time I got on a bus was probably, um, I can't remember, probably a couple of months ago, um, just to get from, um, Jackson Heights to Elmhurst.
Okay.
Um, I, I, what I normally take is the train, the subway, and I took it from Jackson Heights to 14th Street.
Great.
Last time I took a bus from Jackson Heights, 74th Street to my apartment, it was last month.
Thank you. Shaker Krishnan.
About a month ago, uh, my oldest son Vikram wanted to desperately go with me, uh, to the grocery store. So I took him on a bus about 10 blocks out because it was the fastest way to get there.
I took a few weeks ago to go, uh, from Jackson Heights to Four Rockway, Q 53 express bus. Uh, there was a new daycare center opening there, so as a part of my job, we had to do asbestos inspection there.
Thank you. Andy Chen.
It was, uh, last Sunday, Q 58 from Corona Avenue and Broadway to Flushing.
Okay. Let's see if we could squeeze this question in before I get to the all-important food questions. Um, this is a pop quiz. Just say your number. We got to keep it fast. What is the median home price in Jackson Heights? Andy Chen. Fifty, just lift it into the mic.
Five hundred thousand.
Okay. Just well.
I have done house shopping. It depends on the house and location. The houses are getting close to a million dollars now.
Okay. Shaker Krishnan.
Our neighbors getting unaffordable. My guess would be probably somewhere between around 700,000.
Okay. Thank you.
We actually have a range. In my building, average is, uh, 500,000, but you can get a million dollars home here if you've got the money.
Alfonso?
Between 400 and 500,000.
Thank you. Carolyn Tran.
Depending on where in the district, um, I would say the range is at a minimum 500 to a million.
Okay. Thank you. The median home price in Jackson Heights, according to Property Shark, is 366,000. Some of you interpreted that to be single-family homes, so I'm going to let it go. In Queens, it's in the mid 600,000s. I, that question came, of course, from the mayoral debates. Okay. Last question, we'll stick with Carolyn Tran. Green tea, chai, or black coffee? This is the last on the lightning round and then it's your closing statements.
Black coffee, just because it's the healthiest way to drink coffee.
All right. Alfonso.
Uh, black iced coffee.
Okay. Okay.
Black iced coffee, okay.
Kennedy Perez.
Green tea.
Green tea.
Come on, for me, chai, chai, chai.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, for me too, Indian chai.
I used to drink chai all the time, but during campaign, I need black coffee.
Got it. Thank you, Andy Chen. All right. Uh, we are going to move on to closing statements. You want to take us through that?
Thank you, candidate. I mean, finally, we're at the closing statement, and this is where you get one minute and, um, make your case. And, um, it's your final remarks also for people who are here and people who are watching live television, Facebook, YouTube. So you will have one minute for each of you, and, um, we're going to start with, uh, Carolyn Tran.
Thank you so much for everybody for this opportunity and for, um, being with us all today. Uh, my name is Carolyn Tran, running for city council. You know, I never thought that I would be up on this stage running for office if you had told me, um, six months ago, I would have thought that you were crazy. But in this time of need of our community, we really need somebody who on day one can get things up and running. But also what we need is somebody who embodies the spirit of co-governance and expanding democracy so that everybody in this community has a voice. And that is what we are offering in this campaign. And that is why we are the only campaign to build a true grassroots coalition that reaches every corner of this district and every community. Thank you.
Thank you. Krishnan, please.
Thank you so much, TBN Habib, thank you Mitra too for today's debate, which was really enjoyable. Thank you to all the candidates. We face a choice in this city, and we are at that crossroads now. Are we going to be in New York that makes incremental changes around the edges of a failed system? Or are we going to be a city where finally housing is treated as the human right that it is? Where healthcare is accessible to everyone as a human right? And where our neighborhoods of Jackson Heights and Elmhurst get the resources and services that we have so desperately needed. This is the world and future that I want to fight for with all of you together and that we've been fighting for in our neighborhoods. And I'm proud to be doing so in a campaign that is historic, because we've never actually elected a South Asian to the city council in the history of New York City. I'm proud to be running as a candidate that comes out of the housing movement, fighting day and night against the way in which our neighborhoods have become so unaffordable. As a bilingual Spanish speaking candidate, fighting for our immigrant New Yorkers. And as a campaign that has virtually the support of every single labor union in this race.
Thank you.
Because they know that we'll be a champion for workers and for our, uh, most essential vulnerable communities. I hope to earn your vote, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Manuel Perez, please.
I believe in each and every one of you and in myself, we have a voice. And if Facebook, Google, and Amazon can predict what we want, why can't our elected officials do the same? I'm a person that's involved in technology. I believe in having the technology so that you can communicate with me, with other electeds effectively. And your voice can be heard and acted upon. We are one. We are one community, and each one of us here is just as important for the other ones as the other ones. Freedom, justice, pursuit of happiness. That is my purpose as a city council member. And I want you to elect me so we can make a great new future where all of us can have success.
Thank you, thank you. Candidate Alfonso Quiros, your turn.
You guys did a great job. Thank you very much. My only suggestion is next time we do a drinking, a drinking game. Anybody that mentions they have a plan, we take a shot.
But what would you drink, Alfonso?
Tequila, tequila.
Okay.
Um, 100 years from now, historians are going to look back at our time here. And they're going to see a city that was reimagined and rebuilt. They are going to look at people, and those people are us. They're going to look at communities who did that, and those communities are our communities, Jackson Heights and Elmhurst. And the time is now, the time is now for us to act. I have been involved in this community for a very long time, and I want to be able to, I think that I am the best candidate that can represent you because I have the authenticity, the compassion, and the experience that matters. That's why I'm asking for your vote on June 22nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alfonso. Um, Joshua, please, your, your final remarks.
Thank you, Mitra. Thank you, Habib, and thank you for coming here and, uh, uh, giving your precious time to get to know each other. Uh, as they say, definition of insanity is to do same thing over and over again and expect different results. My name is Suraj Jaswal. I'm a Libertarian Party's candidate. I have no primary challenger, so I'm progressing direct to November 2nd. So you will see me on the ballot on November 2nd. I want to bring fresh, fresh ideas. I want to bring different ideas. I, I want to bring different approach to the table. I hope you keep an open mind and disregard party labels and vote for the best candidate. If you vote for me, if nothing else, at the end of the day, you can walk up to a city content and get, get yourself a good and healthy meal. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy Chen, it's your turn.
First of all, thank you, Epicenter and TBN 24. Um, I think at this time, we all need to realize and understand that now more than ever, we need someone who, before running for office, who need to show the track record of serving the community and helping the community. Because at this time, we cannot elect someone who just running for office for their own interests. We need someone to show out as a community leader. Currently, we still under pandemic, but just asking each candidate this question. What if years after, in the future, this pandemic happened again, what would you do? These people will tell you millions of things, but look back, what have you done in this pandemic? When our district, our city needed the most, where were you? Are you there with the community, with the people? Because I believe a leader, you will not leave where you will not go. You were doing the most hardest job, stay with the community.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your closing, uh, remarks. I really do want to sincerely thank each of the candidates, just not for being here, but for your service to the community that we love. I believe you know that I happen to live in this district. What I feel so lucky about is to have candidates like you who are partnering with us in service, regardless of the outcome of the election. Um, we also want to thank our hosts, our generous, generous host, Saint Mark's Church, for all that you have done for us today in hosting and opening up your church for us to gather as a community, but also for all that you do for the neighborhood. And Habib, I think there's a few more people we need to thank.
Yeah, uh, I couldn't agree more. It, it, by the way, all of you, thank you so much for coming and joining and sharing your thoughts. Uh, all of you almost live in this community. We put aside, when we started this discussion today, our planning to put aside the, the global or regional politics between Republicans and, and Democrats. We didn't want to bring into this mix. We want to only talk about our local community ourselves and see how we can better ourselves. And you all have been working, contributing, and one, very soon, one of you will become the city council member. So I, I want to give you my sincere heartfelt thank for the work you have been doing already. And we, I, we hope and look forward to get more support from you. At the same time, thanking you, thanking all the audience to be here, we're watching live on TBN 24, Facebook, Epicenter. I have to thank, uh, Mitra, you, uh, uh, our audience, our, our staff from TBN 24, and everybody who's watching from home. Thank you so much, and I hope you got valuable information from the candidates here, from Jackson Heights, East Elmers, Elmers. And I, it too, it, to me, it felt a sincere appeal that they made their strong cases. And I hope you choose wisely when you choose your candidate. So thank you. We'll see you around.
All right, that does it for us. And now has come the time that all of you in the hall have been waiting for. You may applaud. Uh, please give our candidates a big round of applause. Thank you. And, uh, the candidates will be available to talk, but please don't do that inside. We can be in the garden, on open streets. Uh, we just want to make sure that we're maintaining social distancing and, uh, continuing safety. Again, thank you all so much for being with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Three, it's, it's a studio apartment.
Oh, thank you. Wonderful meeting you too.
Great job, Alfonso.
Thank you too.